We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. For tonight's invocation, we've got the Pastor Philip Newman of the Grace Baptist Church. Pastor?
I would pray. Where shall I be, Father? We thank you for a beautiful day that we've been able to enjoy. And we thank you too for the recent rains that we have had. We know that's a concern through many states. And we trust that we might be able to receive more here in the near future. We do thank you for your guidance and direction in each of our lives, for your concern about each one of us as individuals. And I do thank you for our mayor and our aldermen, for the time and effort that they put forth in overseeing the things of our city. And we're grateful for all of our city workers and the job that they are doing. And I pray for your guidance and direction upon this meeting now. Give your wisdom to each one and all the decisions that need to be made. We do pray for our country, for our president, we pray for our state, for our governor, and all the decisions that each one of them are confronted with. I mindful pray tonight too for those in here right here in our own community that have recently suffered of loss of a loved one. Minister your grace to each one of them. You are the God of all comfort, and we pray for your comfort upon each of those meetings. We ask this now in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Sean Burdell.
Here.
Renee Dorchinez.
Here.
Rob Heberlin.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coons.
Here.
John Lawrence.
Here.
Martin Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Here.
Sean Burdell.
Here.
Renee Dorchinez.
Here.
All aldermen present. First thing we have is a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings and public hearings listed on tonight's agenda under the title of omnibus vote designation. Alderman Dorchinez, second by Alderman Jones. Discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Renee Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Renee Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Renee Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, next we have an ordinance authorizing the sale of real estate, this being the, what used to be the Jermaine property on 26 Illinois Drive.
Second.
Alderman Jones, can you have a second?
Say.
Second alderman, Voda, discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Renee Dorchinez.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, next we have an ordinance authorizing the sale of real estate, this being the, what used to be the Jermaine property on 26 Illinois Drive.
Second.
Alderman Jones, can you have a second?
Say.
Second alderman, Voda, discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Renee Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, next we have a motion to have the mayor sign the notice of intent toward the rehabilitation of the 500,000 gallon water storage tank on Cherokee Street to Max Core Incorporated for the amount of $629,400. I'll make that motion, Your Honor. Alderman Dorchinez, have a second. Second by Alderman Lawrence, discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Renee Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a motion to allow the use of a city street for the sale of alcohol at Chili Best. As I think you're all aware, I did get the correspondence from the president of the chamber asking to, first basically, she asked to take it off the agenda. I said she couldn't do that, we couldn't do that, but we could table it. So if anyone-
I'd like to make a motion to table this, and we'll discuss this at the ordinance committee meeting at our next regularly scheduled ordinance committee.
Okay, can I get a second on that motion as far as tabling?
Second.
Go ahead with your comment, Alderman Walters.
I just wanted to be clear that based upon the minutes of my two street and sewer committee meetings, that we had, evidently was put in the press possibly in error, but it was, it was brought to my attention that the, according to Patty Hornbrotko, President, the old elevator Chamber of Commerce, the chamber was prepared to set the issue aside, but it was brought back to the forefront after a request from a Taylorville City Council Committee. It was brought back at the request of a Taylorville City Council Alderman, not my committee.
Okay.
I'd just like to have that out for clarification purposes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, motion to table.
Oh, that's true.
That's right. That's correct.
Okay.
No debate.
All right, roll call.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Renee Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
No.
Okay, motion passes seven to one, table. Does pass, so is table. That brings us to city attorney updates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a whole lot. We met last, a week ago today, I did with Clerk Peabody. She had multiple issues that we addressed. We will be handling, once proper notices are out, the whole of the donut annexation along the Langleyville Road. Again, it's basically what we do is we send out notice of the intent to do it, even though they really don't have much say-so over it. We also discussed the Springfield Road annexations. Those, of course, as everyone knows, are based upon the ordinance that we passed, that if you're receiving services and you're contiguous to the city of Taylorville, then you must come in. We basically give them, and the same applies to the North Cheney Street annexations. We give them a time certain to come and voluntarily annex into the, to the city free of charge, basically. And if they don't do that, then of course, it will cost them. So there are going to be a lot of annexations over, I would say, Clerk Peabody, the next two months. Is that fair? I also revisited the Kim Morton, you know, we had to revise the plat of that easement based upon the adjacent owner of the Morton property who were unwilling to give us an easement. I sent that way back in May to her, have not heard from her, so I emailed both she and her attorney again today to figure out what's going on there. Another issue that was brought to my attention by the clerk was the City of Pena public utility easement for the Mayhan Waterline. And we have everybody but City of Pena, did I say Taylorville? City of Pena. The, she contacted me finally this afternoon and basically said that it would be heard a week from today, on the 13th, and she should have those, and at that point in time, I think Clerk Peabody intends to put that on the next agenda?
Yeah.
And that way we will have that done. One other thing I want to report on, I did hear back from Mr. Graham regarding the housing authority and their dis- entrance that they have now. I talked to Joe Green today because I want to get his take on it, and I think everybody probably has seen the last letter. Joe wants more clarification because he wants to know exactly which side of the current entrance they want another 12 feet. So I sent Mr. Graham a letter today to that effect, and we'll get to the bottom of that one way or the other, although I think most of you gentlemen and ladies know what Joe Green's position is on that. And that is basically what the plan's called for back when they renovated Sprecher Street. So unless anyone has any questions, that's about all I have.
Alderman Heberlin.
Those pertaining to the annexation issues on North Cheney, I think there's probably three residences in particular, is the city assuming any liabilities by annexing those properties in?
Are you referencing, may I-
Yes, please.
Are you referencing, I think it's my understanding, speaking with certain representatives of this city, and I don't recall who that was, they were wanting to know, well, if we're annexed in, that means you're going to solve this problem and that problem, and this problem was sewer and water. And it was my response to whoever that person was, that this city gets to the problems on what I consider to be an as-need basis. You know, whatever needs to be done, we get it done as quickly as we can, or you gentlemen do. And I told them that would be the same way. That's not going to solve any major problems, but at least those problems will be put on our, for lack of a better word, checklist, point list, or whatever. I think that's fair, Mr. Mayor, is that fair? I mean, we're not going to replace-
Which side of the fence you are.
Well-
If you're telling me and I'm the homeowner, that's not going to make me happy, no.
Exactly. And, but it's basically the same situation as, and God, I hate to even bring up a dirty word, but, you know, it's the same thing with the Burton Eddie annexation issues, okay? It was not like if we annexed them in, that we were going to give everybody, you know, four, five million dollars worth of city sewer based upon the, you know, it just not being cost-effective. So same thing basically applies, I think, in my opinion. So are we taking on any liability? Ultimately, we're taking on some liability, I suppose, but nothing that, you know, that this council or any future councils cannot, you know, decide what's going to be, what's going to take place and what's not going to take place.
When those annexations are made, if there are any issues to be dealt with, the property owners are going to have to deal with those issues at their own expense and not at the city's expense. Is that correct?
I guess it would depend on where the problem is.
Right. I mean, if it's, if the problem is, and I don't know whether they have sewer out there or not, I mean, I know they have water.
It's my understanding there are issues out there.
Issues with water or sewer?
Sewer.
Okay. But do they actually, are they on a City of Taylorville liability?
No.
Okay, well, that's a little bit different story then. I mean, I mean, any, anything, any line, sewer line that we're responsible for, of course, we have to take that into consideration, which is a different thing than Burton Eddie because they don't have any sewer out there, except on the south side. So I think that anything to do with the water line, okay, again, as the mayor pointed out, where the problem exists, okay, it becomes, for lack of a better term, a liability. We would have to address that. And it's my understanding, I'll defer to Superintendent Spiegel, but that's, we're just responsible from where to where.
On the water?
Yeah.
We're responsible for the main and then the service up to the job, meaning well, the shop, but beyond that, that's on what?
Yeah, so 90% of it, 99% of it is the property owners.
In fact, there are portions.
Yeah.
So if in the, in the future, if a new sewer line was called for to be installed, it would not be the city's responsibility to install that new sewer line?
No, I didn't say that. Okay, that's another-
That's my question.
Okay, well, that question is one that in the event that that project was placed on a list of, you guys know more than I do, about how many projects, it would be addressed in the order, I assume, of urgency and things of that nature. It's just like anybody else that has a problem with, with our sanitary sewer, I mean, you know, and storm sewers. I mean, look at the things that have been resolved just during my watch by you, Joe, not me. You know, we solved a lot of, you guys solved a lot of problems with regard to that one neighborhood down there, you know, that they kept getting water all the time. Right now, the project's going on is the Kenton Edition, okay, that goes all the way from my backyard to the back of Larry Berry's former, you know, place of business. So it's just a matter of, you know, addressing the problems as they arise. But yes, once they're, you know, you know, a new line came in and they're, they're in the city, and if this council decided to, to fund that project, then it's our, it's our baby at that time because they are in the city.
Alderman Voda.
I think I'm, I know where Mr. Heberlin's coming from. I think one of my concerns is, we know there are potential existing problems with the sewer out there. If we were to annex these properties in and knowingly are aware of some of these potential problems, is the city liable to make sure, once we have brought these properties in, that they are going to meet all health and building code? And if that's the case, is it the city's finances then that will have to be utilized to take care of these known problems? At this time, at this time, they're sitting outside city limits. We really have no control over that. Right. Once we bring them in. Once they, yeah, once we bring them in, and if they have issues there, and if they, like most other people within the city, the city corporate proper, if they show up and show up and show up at meetings long enough, then the City of Taylorville could resolve whatever problem that they have. I take it right now, they are not on city sewer.
No, correct.
So it's not a, it would be something where they, that would have to come up, and I wish somebody could help me out with the people on whatever street it was that showed up for-
Power Street.
Power Street, meeting after meeting after meeting, and, and finally, you know, it was, it was resolved in a fashion that was very satisfactory to them. So it'd be the same situation. But yes, would it, would be our baby then? Yes, it would be on our tab.
Thank you. Okay. Alderman Dorchinez.
Well, the Powers and Poplar Streets, that's what you're referring to, that the people came to a lot of meetings. It wasn't taken care of because they attended a lot of meetings. We took care of it because we had, money became available from the sales tax that was passed, the referendum. And I think that as far as any problems would, we would be facing with bringing those people in that we're talking about on North Cheney Street, those would be dealt with just like anybody else that doesn't have a sewer. For example, we have people on Lincoln Trail that haven't had sewers and been in the city for a long, long time. I would think that, you know, it's a, it's a practicality, you know, you're not going to probably spend a million dollars to run a sewer line to one house. You're going to do the most practical thing. And so I think we would handle this situation the same as, we would handle a situation like that.
I just respond bravely. That's exactly right, Alderman Dorchinez. I was not in any way, shape, or form insinuating that the city was untimely in remedying the problem on Power Street because that wasn't the case. I live at these meetings just like you gentlemen do, and I know that, but it was a situation where, you know, these people attended a lot of meetings because they were curious and they had an interest in it. So I wasn't insinuating that, we didn't act in a timely fashion because I think we acted in the best timely fashion that we could, as you pointed out, Alderman Dorchinez, with funds available. And that was, that was a big project.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Move on to mayor updates. During the invocation, Pastor Newman thanked the good Lord for the rainy ascent, and we want to echo those things, and we will pray to him to send some more. The thing that came out of that rain, though, and that surprised me, is, you know, as of this morning, that lake level has been restored to its normal pool. It amazes me on two sides, one, that a three-inch rain or something can, can have the lake rise by over 15 inches. That's amazing. But that, that just tells you what a vast watershed we have that feeds our lake and how lucky we are for that. Flip side of that is that same vast watershed area brings a lot of silt in, and we're going to have to deal with that quickly in a relatively short period of time that that lake can fill up, and that's what's happened over a couple decades here, and we're going to have to deal with that in the near future. The city right now is currently under the voluntary water restriction, and several people have asked me, you know, whilst we have the big rain and the lakes back up, are you going to, you know, take it off? And I see no reason to. I mean, again, we're, it's voluntary in nature. We just kind of want people to use some common sense there. If you're watering your yard every day, you know, still, try and, try and do it every other day, you know, still try and conserve a little bit. So somebody also asked me about some fundraisers, car washes and stuff that the kids do during the summer, and they says, can we still go ahead and do those? And I said, well, at this point, I would say go ahead and do those at this point. But, Alderman Dorchinez, did you have a-
Well, you said, you know, about the voluntary water restrictions and that you'd like to continue. We just had a meeting before the city council tonight, and we're talking about dredging and about who's going to, who's going to pay for that. We're taking money out of the Lake Restoration Fund, the rest of it's coming from the water fund. So I'm looking at it the other way. The more you use, the better off we are, if we want, you know, it's sort of, it's sort of the more you use, the more you help ourselves. You know, it's, the more we use, the more money comes in the coffers, and that'll, that'll turn into dredging the lake and making more water available so that in the future, if we ever have any, any problems with the, with the drought, we'll have more, more of an insurance policy by having more water in the lake.
That's one way to look at it. If the drought comes back, bottled water at the Dorchinez house, right? All right. Last week, we did receive two reimbursement checks for the solar panels. We got $44,170 from the Illinois Clean Energy Community Foundation and another $13,430 from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunities. So we got a little over $57,500 in funds from those. So it's, we knew it was coming, but it's glad when you actually have it in your hands. So that was good news. And just a reminder, it'll soon be time for the annual IML conference again. It's going to be held October 18th through the 20th in Chicago. And as the ones, the aldermen that have been there before, you know, it's a, it's a very good conference, you can learn a lot, you get to network with other people, and you quickly find out that even though this is a big state, the problems are awful similar. But every once in a while, you can find somebody that's looked at, looked at it a different way and come up with a different, different answer that might work as, for us as well. So I think it's well worth going. Again, because the finances aren't great here, you know, we'll still ask you to cover probably 50% of the cost, and I'll put out a memo, basically will mirror what we did last year. But if you're interested, we want to put that out there now so you can talk to your spouse, look at your schedule, and see if that can fit into your schedule. That's all I've got, unless you guys have questions or comments. We'll move on to committee reports. Discussions and our motions to approve, adopt, and or deny, and or table, and or amend, and or refer to an appropriate committee in Halloran Park to matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at committee level. And we'll start out with Water Environmental Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. See, if that one motion already made is already being taken care of. It hasn't. I'd like to use the omnibus vote on this, so I make a motion to that effect.
Okay, I've got a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of all motions presented at the July 18th, 2012-
I'll second that, Your Honor.
-Water Environmental Committee. Alderman Dorchinez, second Alderman Walters, discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Renee Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
That motion passes. And then, do you want to go ahead and quickly just read the motions?
And the motion to accept a little bit for the rehab of well number two, for $24,665 for cleaning and treating, $14,666, $66 for rebuilding the Aqua Stream, or $19,333 for replacing the Aqua Stream from Brockie Well and Pump. Next motion is to allow Superintendent Spiegel to purchase a ditch witch model 950R receiver and model 950 transmitter, a cost of nine, $3,922.30 from Ditch Witch Sales Incorporated. Motion to accept the quote of $2,115 plus the $36 per month charged from Wareham Security for a security system for the Country Club Storage Buildings, and I'd like to make the omnibus vote to pass those three motions.
Okay, we have that motion. Alderman Dorchinez, can you have a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second Alderman Walters, discussion or comments?
Just a comment, Your Honor. I want to thank Mr. Dorchinez for reading those motions. Whenever we spend money, I think it's the wise thing to do is to have that in public record. Thank you.
Agreed. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Renee Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to Lake Airport.
Your Honor, in my absence, Mr. Walters was good enough to chair the committee and apologize for not being there, so I will go ahead and refer Mr. Walters to read the minutes and read the motions as directed. Thank you.
Okay. Your Honor, I will go through these because we have some information I think would be apropos for everyone to be aware of.
Okay.
I'll try to go through these very quickly. The Airport Annual Service Agreement, QT Technologies, the initial warranty on our annual service agreement will expire for QT Technologies Fueling Terminal on September the 12th, 2012. To receive the technical support without paying labor charges and to receive discounted or free parts, the service agreement is required. Motion for Alderman Dorchinez and Second Alderman Lawrence to recommend the city council to select the gold level plan for the annual service agreement with QT Technologies Fueling Terminal for an annual fee of $995. That motion carried three to nothing. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, got a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Voda, discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Renee Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.[1598.87]
We have recently found that the kilowatt hour credits produced are carried on a quarterly basis instead of a yearly basis. Any extra credits for the quarter will be lost and not carried forward. So, I want you all to be aware of that. Information on the underground fuel tanks for you gentlemen to read. Airport other matters. The Kennedy property cross route forty-eight to the east airport where the Beacon sets is currently for sale. Through the years, there have been only a gentleman's agreement for our NDB, our Beacon, to sit on this property. I think this is rather important. This matter will be discussed further. We're gonna be facing a decision in four to one as to what we want to do with that piece of property, or what we need to do with that piece of property. And Nation Farms has been farming the bigger portion of the airport farm land for two years. They would like an agreement with the city that if they put the expense of upgrading the soil at their cost, that they can farm the property for the next four years in order to recoup their expenses. This would, in the long run, enhance the value of the land. Dwayne Stock will be consulted on the matter, and this will be placed on the next Lake Airport agenda. Information, the other information that we were kinda disappointed in was the Lake Island, or we call it, the ones of us that are out there, Snake Island. The person who is interested in having a concession stand installing a seawall and building up Snake Island by pulling silt from the lake back to the island was not present. The matter will be removed from the agenda until we hear further from that gentleman. Dredging, we'll get into that this evening also, but there's an estimate on there for the total dredging. And it was discussed at the committee level that Superintendent Jackson, Beagle will contact construction for payment with some more information. So, we'll be reporting on that. Locust Creek Inspection, information for you. Interesting information from the Lake Superintendent. Superintendent Jackson reported the lake had a good Fourth of July taking and approximately five thousand dollars. The first annual five K run was successful. The car show drew approximately seventy participants, and live band performed the afternoon of the Fourth. So, I think that we're moving forward with the Fourth of July to bring it back to what we used to do years ago at the Lake Marina. Other than that, gentlemen, I think that was all that was on there. There was motion by Alderman Lawrence and Second Malumon Dorcheness to adjourn. Motion carried three to nothing. I'd like to make the motion that we accept these minutes, but we already have.
We've approved those. Now, there's one motion on the inspection.
Missed after, Your Honor.
Yeah. Inspection papers for the Locust Creek Detention Basin Dam at a cost not to exceed six hundred dollars.
Okay, I got it. All right, thank you. Motion to forward the dam inspection papers for Locust Creek Detention Basin Dam to Green and Red for completion at a cost not to exceed six hundred dollars. I'm gonna get in the form of a motion.
Okay, got a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Voda. Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, then, Mr. Voda, you want to take over as far as tonight's meeting?
I do not have the minutes yet, Your Honor.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
That's quite all right. I was just expecting that goes last. The Lake and Airport did, committee did meet this evening, and we were discussing one item on the agenda, which was the dry dredging at the lake. Gentlemen, I don't want to go into detail. I believe we were all here in discussion. But basically, what it boils down to is we have the opportunity to do some dry dredging at the Locust Creek Silt Dam area, and at this time, substantially a cost saving compared to what we would have had to do if we were to do the daily dredging. So, with that, gentlemen, I'll go ahead and let you read through this. I think all the numbers were discussed, but in the motion itself, it explains what the costs are. So, I'll make the motion, Your Honor. Motion was made by Alderman Dorcheness, second by Alderman Walters, to recommend to the city council to accept the proposal from Byers Construction Company Incorporated to remove thirty thousand cubic yards at a cost of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars to be paid from the Lake Restoration Fund, with the remainder funding coming from the Water Fund, and that is to be paid per contract agreement. That motion carried out a committee four to nothing. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion, Your Honor, to the city council.
Okay. Got that motion by Alderman Voda. Can I get a second?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Second by Alderman Walters. Additional discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just to piggyback on top of that, this is very important to the continuous water resources for the community. So, I think this is a just cause and a just expense. With that, Your Honor, there was a motion by Alderman Dorcheness, second by Alderman Walters to adjourn the meeting. That motion carried four to nothing. The meeting was adjourned at six twenty-four P.M. I'd like to enter, make a motion to enter these into the archives, Your Honor.
Okay, got a second on that one?
Second.
Second Malumon Lawrence. Discussion or comments? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Moving on to Finance Committee.
Your Honor, we have one motion coming out of the Finance Committee, which I will make, and that is a motion to approve the Sam Taylor to Fissay grant applications and amounts that I will present. And I make that motion, and would like to have some comments.
Okay. Got a second on that motion?
Comment.
Alderman Burtle, go ahead with your comment. Alderman Lawrence?
Basically, we haven't the details in this motion, but referring to the committee minutes, we have, we have six Fissay grants spending a total of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars out of our Sam Taylor funds, which will leave a balance of approximately thirty thousand, seven hundred dollars in that fund. And the only project of the Sam Taylor Fund is the Fissay renovation at this time. I also think we should congratulate Main Street, who monitors and is in charge of the applications and forwarding the recommendation to the city council chairman of the board, Becky Edwards, who's here tonight. And individually, we are granting seventy-five hundred dollars to Spurling Title for one eighteen West Market Street, which is the south side of the square. And then, we have four, five more, South Washington Street grants. Spurling Title, again, for one oh seven South Washington, the four thousand dollars. Butch and Cindy's Inc., one oh nine South Washington, four thousand dollars. Richanne Maryland Payne, one oh five South Washington, twenty-eight hundred dollars. And Janet DeClerc, one oh three South Washington Street, thirty-six hundred dollars. And Spurling Title, again, one fifteen South Washington Street for two thousand dollars. These are all on the condition of completing the state projects, and the amount could vary. Probably little, but I think it's a good thing for the square that after, I don't know how many years it's been since we've had an application, but we are making issue of that money.
Thank you. Alderman Burtle?
Yeah, I'd like to echo some of John's comments. First of all, I'd like to thank the business owners here tonight, but they were here at the Finance Committee meeting. I think that those businesses stepping forward during the last few months have really made a huge difference in the way the square looks. And I want to thank Becky Edwards and her team for selling the Sam Taylor Fund a little harder than it's been sold in the past. So, I think she's doing a good job, and I think that the business owners on the square deserve a big thank you. I think it looks nice.
I would agree. Alderman Walters?
I just, a point of order for you. If you so approve, we have Mrs. Becky Edwards here tonight, the executive director of the Taylorville Main Street, in case there's any questions or someone would like to ask her for any clarification of these issues we have here in the audience. So, if you want to open the floor to that, or someone wants to do that, why, if she is here.
If anyone has questions, let me know. Any other questions, comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes. Bring us to Public Facilities.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one motion to make, and that's a motion to approve Municipal Building and Masonary Repairs Change Order Number Two and Pay the Invoice Received in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and thirty-six cents from Evans Mason Incorporated for the additional work. I'd like to place that in form of a motion.
Okay, you got a second on that? Second, Alderman Heatherling. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving to Street and Sewer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a number of motions that I want to go through this evening as a change of pace. I'll kind of throw you gentlemen off a little bit here. Motion to prepare an ordinance to amend sections six four three four A and six four three six to designate the first two parking spaces west of Shumway to be designated for parking of the vans at the Christian County Senior Citizen Center, which will change the current handicap parking areas as marked on the map as requested.
Okay.
Making that as a motion.
You got a second on that?
Second.
Second by Alderman Voda. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make another motion to block off South Main Street from West Adams to Second Alley Pass. The school from Friday, September the fourteenth at four P.M. until Sunday, September the sixteenth at six P.M. For the St. Mary's Church Perry's Fiesta, and to coordinate plans for Superintendent Wiseman.
Got that motion. Got a second on that?
Second.
Second, Malumon Coons. Discussion or comments? I'll just point out that there's no drinking in the street for that festival. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Motion to rescind ordinance thirty-five sixty-six, no parking on the north side of Cleveland.
Okay, got that. Second, Malumon Coons. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance decreasing the sewer tap permit fees.
Got a second on that?
Second.
Second, Alderman Heatherling. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next two are rather important because we're closing in on the end of the project. Motion to approve pay request number ten for McIntyre and Company, an amount of eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and eighty cents for the Ward Two Kenmore Phase Two Storm Sewer Project.
Got a second on that one?
Second.
Second, Alderman Heatherling. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next motion is to approve pay request number seven for McIntyre and Company, an amount of eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty cents for the Ward Two Kenmore Phase Three Storm Sewer Project, and I have a comment on that one, Your Honor.
Okay, can I get a second on that one?
Second.
Second, Alderman Heatherling. Go ahead, drew your comment.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have what I call, still, being an old timer, a punch list or a walkthrough on those two particular areas. And I've spoken with the mayor, also spoken with Joe Green, our city engineer, and Dick Wiseman, our street superintendent, and we're not gonna pay, make any more payments whatsoever until the punch list is done on both of these projects, and we have the credits all back to us.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to accept the low bid of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars from TNT Contracting for the Ward Two City Park Edition Phase Three Storm Sewer Project.
Second on that one?
Second.
Second, Alderman Voda. Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
That motion passes.
We're almost there, gentlemen. Motion to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to place a four-way stop located at the corners of Hayner, Taft, and Hayner and Maxwell.
Okay, got that by Alderman Walters. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Heatherling. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Last one, gentlemen, and then I'll have a comment. Motion to accept the quote of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars from SNES Fencing Company for removal of old corner fencing and the purchase and installation of approximately five hundred and seventy-five feet of fencing and two twenty-foot cantilever gates for the street department.
Okay, you got a second on that?
Second.
Second, Alderman Heatherling. Discussion or comments?
Is that cantilever gates?
Yes.
If he had to say hydrophosphoric acid, he wouldn't be reading that.
That's true.
What he gave.
Any serious comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Your Honor, I will not be doing this at every meeting, but I just thought I would shake this up a little bit this evening and make these motions. I just want to make a review of my fellow Alderman Dorcheness, but I will be going back to the omnibus in the future.
Okay, thank you. I do want to point out that Alderman Dorcheness, I mean Alderman Walters, has helped quite a bit here in the last few days. He's been running back and forth with the situation, trying to find out, you know, where these gates should go and where the property lines are. And he uncovered a mistake that could have caused not only us problems, but the two property owners. So, I want to thank him for the extra effort to get that straightened out for us.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Mayor, may I just interrupt you one second? I assume, if I could, Mr. Mayor, Alderman Walters, with the first motion that you made, I assume that you're directing me to prepare that ordinance along with the motion to rescind?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to Emergency Services.
Your Honor, the United Emergency Services Committee meeting, all the aldermen were present except for two, and the mayor was there. So, I'd like to use the omnibus vote to make the future motion.
Omnibus, okay, so we have a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of all motions presented at the July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve Emergency Services Committee. Or what was the date on that?
August second.
August second, I'm sorry, two thousand and twelve. Okay, Alderman Burtle, who is the second? Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, you want to make a motion on?
You want me to make a motion to redress these motions?
What, if you want to read those motions quickly and then?
First motion was motion to apply for the Illinois Terrorism Task Force Communication Grant, and they've awarded purchase nine Kenwood PTA five radios at a cost of approximately fifteen hundred dollars each for a total of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. With the grant approval, our portion would be six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Next motion was a motion to purchase three Panasonic tough book CF thirties from the Telpro Pro? No, probably.
Telco.
At the total cost of five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, and permission to connect the three with a CMS at a cost of three thousand dollars for a total combined cost of eight thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Next motion was to purchase a one-year supply of ammunition from Kaiser Police Supply at a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents. Next motion was to promote Ron Smith, the acting fire captain, with Mr. Smith receiving the compensation for that position. Next motion was to recommend Brotherton to send a letter to the board of police and fire commissions to promote acting fire captain Ron Smith to fire captain, and to begin the process for a new fire captain's list, as Mr. Smith was the last name on the current list. Next motion was to allow Fire Chief Hackney to apply for a two thousand and twelve SAFER grant. The next motion was to allow Fire Chief Hackney to purchase five sets of coaching pants of fire gear at a cost of fifteen hundred dollars each for a total of seven thousand, five hundred dollars. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, you got a second on that?
Second.
Second, Malumon Coons. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness?